This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Pia, Stratford Town Council Chair. Today is August 10th, 2020 at 6:47 PM. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Town Council of Stratford Public Hearing to order, public forum to order. I don't believe we have anybody on the call that is offering to speak. Just to double check, is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Okay, I don't see anyone, Margot, for the record. With that being that there are no speakers, I'm going to call the public hearing closed, and we'll reconvene at 8:00 PM sharp for the Town Council meeting on this same line. Thank you all.
Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Everybody, thank you for joining me, joining us. Today is August 10th, 2020. It is 8:02 PM. My name is Chris Pia, Stratford Town Council Chairman. We begin the regularly scheduled council meeting with the invocation and pledge. And Councilwoman Cheek, if you can guide us in that, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Let us please take a moment to recognize the resilience of our residents and business owners as they persevere through not only the effects of the recent storm damage, but also the effects of COVID-19 and to all the essential workers who serve on the front line in service to our community and our state. Let us share our gratitude for their sacrifice and wish them continued health, well-being, and safety. And I will pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cheek. Appreciate that. First item on the agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Taveras.
Paul Taveras. If I may, I would just like to take a few seconds to recognize Congressman John Lewis, who just passed recently, and C.T. Vivian. These gentlemen were stalwarts in the civil rights movement and of voting rights. And I certainly feel their spirit. I certainly feel that they would be very proud of us that maybe not serving on the scale that they serve, but no less insignificant than what we do. And on behalf of all of you, and I'd just like to say just that we recognize Congress's Louis for his life service. It's just a second.
And we'll take a moment of sound. Thank you, Mr. Taveras. We'll take a moment of sound. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all. First item on the agenda for everybody. Number one, approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion for a couple of those items under that item.
This is Laura Dancho, motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Pirlo. I see a hand there. We'll just do an all-in-favor vote. Please signify.
I would like to make a motion to amend the minutes of July 13th before we take a vote.
And what would the motion, which item in particular, Ms. Dancho?
I would like to make a motion to amend, to correct the date on the minutes of July 13th from June 8th. In the first line, the date's incorrect.
From the July 13th meeting minutes.
Yeah, it says June 8th on the first line, and it should say July 13th.
Gotcha. So, simple typo. Thank you, Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second to the amendment? Second by Mr. Harden. I saw any discussion on the amendment? Again, a simple typo. I'm looking at it. Any discussion on the amendment by Ms. Dancho? No? Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment, please. So, it'll be a simple voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Share votes aye. Any opposed? Opposed? Okay, motion passes 10-0. I believe we have everybody on the call. Marko? Yes, to my count, I believe we have everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, motion amended has a 10-0. So, back to the original, as amended of approval of the minutes. Motion as amended.
We didn't hear you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. Ms. Dancho, if you'd like to make the motion as amended?
Yes, I'd like to approve the minutes as amended.
And a second to that, please?
A second to that.
Mr. Pirlo, gotcha. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Your pass nine. Any opposed? Motion passes 10-0. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Dancho, for picking up on that. Nothing under item two, under item three, communications bills, petitions or remonstrations. Item 3.1, monthly TANs report. I'm going to ask Dawn to give us the report of how we've done over the last 30 days.
Aye.
Dawn?
Yep, sorry.
Okay.
Undoing it. Okay. I just had that in my hand here. So, the tax collection have been on target. So, we are comparatively, last year, we were at about 50% of the total budget, and this year, we're at 52% of collection rate of the total 100% budget. So, we're tracking almost the same as last year, a little better than last year. And in terms of the cash flow, I'm sorry I didn't get that report out. I can send it to anybody who wants it. Somebody was out last week, so I just didn't have an updated one to send. But we are, you know, right now, we're, we do not need to do any borrowing for tax anticipation notes. We're in good shape right now.
So, Dawn, being that this is our, kind of our first real look at 30 days of this, bottom line is, you said we're a couple percentage points above our present this time last year. Is that correct?
Yeah, so right now, we're at, so what I basically did was I took our entire tax revenue budget, including everything, delinquencies and whatever was in the budget. And last year at this time, you know, we have, our taxes are pretty much, you know, twice a year, we have the July and we have the January due payments. We usually get a little more in July. So, last year at this time, cash that was brought in for all purposes, all late payments, everything, was at, as of 8/7, was at 50.37% of all tax revenue that was budgeted. And this year, we're at 52.36%. So, we are tracking a little, you know, about 2% more than last year. So, we're on target. You know, we don't have, I don't know the breakout of what's current and what's delinquent taxes at this time. We won't know that for another couple of weeks when we reconcile it, but it's looking much better than we anticipated.
And if you could, I know you mentioned you weren't able to get it out, but if you can get that to the council tomorrow?
Yeah, I will. Yes, I did, I sent it to Margot. And Margot, can you email that to everybody tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Okay.
Any questions for Dawn on this month?
Chris, it's Greg Can.
Go ahead, Greg.
When did we anticipate, Dawn, that we could retire that short-term bond?
So, I'm having a conversation with our bond advisor, hopefully this week, and I'll have an answer then. What we normally do is we will start the process of putting together the official statement, dealing with the rating agencies, and with the help of the advisor, and our bond counsel will be sizing the bond. And that basically means, you know, what we anticipate we'll need for the year, what we have to pay back in our short-term borrowing. You know, we usually borrow about a year's worth of short-term, and what we've spent over the past year, and we'll size the bond. And then we'll, you know, we'll have an answer for that. So, I don't have the answer for that right now, but normally, we do that in September. We start the process now in August, and we complete it in September.
Good, Greg.
Okay. Yeah, good.
Excellent. Any other questions for Dawn on the monthly TANs report? Okay, Dawn, thank you very much. We appreciate it. You'll keep us informed going forward. Next item on the agenda, item 3.2. So, I was very excited about this. I know, as well as a couple others, were Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Jeffrey Fletcher. Unfortunately, had a last-minute scheduling conflict. He emailed myself this morning at about 10 o'clock. He was going to present something that he's been working on and very passionate about, about the idea of an African-American museum, to present to the council, to bring everybody up to speed. I don't want to steal his thunder, as this gentleman is incredibly passionate, and I respect everything about it. So, without that, I know, I was really excited to hear it. He is going to, he's already communicated with us. He would like to move the agenda, which we will do. So, I just wanted to at least explain that to everybody. He did email us this morning at about 10:00 with a last-minute emergency. I'm going to hold off on that right now. All right? So, Margot, caller 16, I'm getting a lot of feedback on. Thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mayor Hoedick. Mayor, I'm mute.
Thank you. Thank you again. Tropical Storm Isaias update. Approximately 13,500 customers in Stratford lost power during the tropical storm on Tuesday, August 4th. I'd like to commend Larry Cecarelli, Public Safety Director, PW Director Mo McCarthy, Mike Downs, Chief Ryan Lampart, Joe McNeil, Dispatch Superintendent JP Shudzinski, and Director Mike Louise EMS for all of their and their departments' excellent service to Stratford during the storm and the following recovery. Dispatch received and expedited 765 calls for service on the 4th, which was an unbelievable number of calls that they managed effectively. Fire responded to 128 calls on Tuesday. And EMS responded, over the course of the three-day storm period, to 88 calls. Public Works has worked 24/7 on Tuesday, keeping the roads clear, moving storm debris, and working with the utility companies to make safe passage and restore power. Public Works continues to work and to remove storm debris. They worked till about 8:00 tonight, and we will have many days of work ahead of us to come. How proud I was. I can't tell you how proud I was of our departments, how well they work together, and how they put the safety of Stratford's residents first. We should all be very, very appreciative of their expertise and just their ability. As we've seen through this whole COVID pandemic, you know, with Andrea leading the charge from the Health Department, to Brian, who is really the enforcer for Brian, Joe, and Andrea, who are the enforcement officers for the town for COVID. It's pretty outstanding how well they work together and what efforts they have fostered and the outcomes that we've received. So, I just want to publicly thank them for all their service. We had a server upgrade. As you know, I reported last month that flagship, our IT provider, was in the final stages of installing the servers, which went beautifully. And now, we are experiencing faster operations, which instead of the almost dial-up sequence that we used to have experienced, we are now actually moving in the 21st century. And I'm happy to tell you, councilors, that your patience has been, will be rewarded shortly, because now everything is ready for the email conversion to exchange online email. So, I know you've been really patient and have not gotten the communication as much as, as well as we would have hoped from your town email addresses, but you will shortly. We should be ready to cut over to this on Thursday. So, they're doing some testing tomorrow and Wednesday and Thursday, God willing. I hope I receive immediate emails from you guys that tell me things are working. Our PPE and COVID update is, to date, we have 906 cases and 79 deaths. The Public Safety Director, School Safety Director, signed MOU, was sent to the Board of Education, and I'm waiting for the fully executed document to be returned. Regarding town and school collaborations, the town continues to work with the Stratford Public School Administration to be ready the buildings for the opening of school on September 9th. We were advised that the A/B hybrid attendance model has been selected by the superintendent. So, I'll explain it very briefly to you. So, that's Group A will attend school on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday, there will be no one in attendance in the schools except for the janitorial staff cleaning, and Group B will attend schools on Thursday and Friday. Middle school teacher, Chris Newlin, he is a science teacher at Worcester Middle School, is one of the two Connecticut teachers to win the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. Our infrastructure projects are going along very well. If you've been by Zikorsky Airport and the Mary Parkway on Route 110, it's beautifully done. Kudos to John Casey and also Mary Dean for advocating for this project as long as they have. Exit 32 and 33 are moving along, and Route 113, which is Main Street, as you can see through the obstacle course of the raised manhole covers that we are proceeding. And hopefully, as I went by Main Street after I left Town Hall tonight, it was about 7:00, some of it was very flush. So, they should be finishing that paving and then lining the street, which is great. Also, regarding the schools, I signed a letter of intent for the Benell baseball field in light of our intent to install field lights that were approved by the Planning Commission. And as these lights would be incorporated into the project at some point in time, I signed the letter of intent because if we had waited until after the turf was, I signed a letter of intent, let me explain this, to include the lights into the project. Because if we had waited until after the turf was placed, it would have cost us an additional $100,000. So, under my purview of mayor, I do have the right to allocate the LOCP funds, which are as a grant allocated from the state. So, I chose to use those funds to do this part of the project. It's in CIP for next year. We can allocate that for something else. But in light of it saving $100,000, I wanted to advise you that I had done that. And then, we can discuss it more, because you have an item on the agenda to approve the contract for the Benell baseball field. The Concerts on the Green started last month. They went really, really well. August 11th is the Reentry Band. The 18th is the Void. August 21st is the Band, and I believe that's Bobby Burrows Band. And 25th is the Cold Ones, and September 1st, Chauncey Street Blues Band. As you know, Town Hall has been open for tax, walk-in service for tax collection and the tax assessor. The Town Hall entrance by those offices are open, but there's a concierge who greets you and directs you to where you should go. Base masks are required when entering the building. All the other departments are by appointment, and the residents are encouraged to use the online services. And I'm pleased to report that most residents are doing that, and it seems to be working out very well. Our public meeting status, as you know, the chairs, at the chair's discretion, the meetings are either online or in person. Some chairs have been very open-minded. They've had open-air meetings. I know the Arts Commission has met at Shakespeare Theater, Shakespeare property. So, that was kind of cool. And then, we've asked that no one put themselves at risk, and there's only one night, one meeting allowed in council chambers at night. The Stratford Point Keeper's House is scheduled for painting next week. We had a ribbon cutting at Jared's Dog Park on Saturday. It's a beautiful facility. I encourage you to go to Resort Forest to see it. And I am reappointing to Commissioner Shannon Hoven to the Architectural Review Board, and Daniel Hoy to the Long River Park Commission. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me, before I open up to questions for the mayor, I'll ask my, I will ask the mayor and ask mine, and just first start with a couple of things. First off, to echo what you said about your departments, I can't tell you what an amazing job these guys, these men and women have done these last five, six days. I mean, just, it's simple. I went out to thank my garbage men this morning, to say, guys, because you can see it, and they're just utterly exhausted. And just a simple thank you is a really great thing for Fire, EMS, everybody, Public Works. So, thank you again, and please, please thank them all for us. The other thing is, I did, was go Friday evening and accept the award by the Breakettes. So, Bob Baird and the Stratford Breakettes gave us a nice little thank you to Mayor Hoedick and the council for all the great improvements that DeLuca has gotten over the last year. The place, the field looks amazing, and the young ladies who are creating in the tournament, I believe that, I believe it was the 12th or 14th annual Breakettes National Tournament, were very much appreciative. So, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for that. Any questions for the mayor? No. I have Councilwoman Cheek first. I saw her hand. So, I'll go with Caitlin. Go ahead.
Yes, everyone, you know, in DPW and our parks and public safety, the amount of influx of calls and just neighbors, thankful for the cooperation, everyone in the town. And then, just, I think the neighborly gestures that people made was very encouraging. So, I'm sure this unfortunately isn't the only storm that we're going to have over the next few months. So, my feedback is that, you know, I hope that we're as best prepared as possible. And I'm very thankful for the active communication coming from the mayor's office to residents. I know that that was shared widely, and people greatly appreciated that, because that was the only, you know, platform, whether mostly on social media, that people were able to stay updated and then get it from their neighbors as well. So, thank you for that. Mayor Hoedick, my question is to you regarding the Long River Park Commission. I had sent an email inquiring Amy Wiltsi's possible vacancy, because I never received any form of, you know, official communication since January, since I was sworn in in December that there was a vacancy. And the last that we had heard from Amy was that she thought that she was still going to be sitting, because her term was not up, even though she had moved out of the district. So, if you could just explain that.
So, are there requirements for the commission to be a member of the second district?
When I inquired, I was told that the answer was no.
So, that's probably why she wouldn't have to resign, because she's, as a citizen of Stratford, she could still participate on the commission.
Correct. So, I didn't receive any official notice that she had resigned, which I'm assuming is the seat that is vacant, that Mr. Hoy is filling. Is that correct?
I thought Dan Hoy was on the commission. Well, then, I'm going to have to ask Mike Downs to check into this.
Okay. You and the rest of the commission, because I did email Mike, and I spoke to Margot, and at one point, I did speak to the town clerk also over the last couple of weeks. So, we could talk about this offline, but he.
It's okay to talk about it now, Caitlin. I mean, if there's, if there's no vacancy, if there's no vacancy for appointment, then Dan will have to wait for, until there's a vacancy.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was possibly something that I was missing. So, I just wanted clarification. But as far as, as far as I am aware, you don't have any vacancies. I thought that you were replacing Amy. So, that was, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, no, I do. Thank you for saying that. But I didn't receive a resignation from her. So, I just thought, because Dan was so active, attending meetings before, that he was on the commission. So, that's my apologies.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. We'll check into it for you. Mr. Taveras? Yes, sir?
Thank you, through the chair. Good evening, Mayor. I also want to extend my kudos to the expediency of your staff of Public Works. I'm sure all of us were stressed out with the phones ringing off the hook, but the way the guys work, and the way they're still working, they're working their tails off. And I certainly sent an email to Mo McCarthy, thanking him for a couple of residents that literally had trees on their homes, and they came out there. And I wish UI had as much expediency as our guys did. And I know that the, so I thank you for that. Thank your staff and Mike, and they answered all my calls. It really was, was good. It's just that, what was heart-wrenching for me was the calls of folks that didn't have power, that needed to have their medicases refrigerated. I sent out a blast to everybody on Facebook and Messenger that, please look out for neighbors, that the ones that did have power to do that. And I know that the governor, I know that the governor sent out a request for a investigation. It's just that, you know, the next storm is coming, and how do we deal with the trepidation of that? Do we inundate them with calls to see if they're ready? Is there, do you think there's going to be a report with some kind of plausible explanation as to what happened? Only because of the fact that, when the next time comes, how do we tell all of our constituents that we've got it together? I know that's not, and I'm not trying to corner you with the questions, is that, as a freshman council person, I don't want to just tell people, you know, make sure you have ICE, or, I just felt so inept in that part of it, because of the fact that so many of us had power for so, out of power for so long.
And having lived through Irene and Sandy, you know, we all have experienced that loss of power and that fear. And I agree with you, Paul, that especially for those people that are more isolated, those are the ones that I am very concerned with. And thank you so much for reaching out to your neighborhoods and asking them to look out for their neighbors, because it's really, really important. And when people would email or call, that's exactly what I would say. Do you have a neighbor that has electricity? Can you put your diabetic insulin into their refrigerator? But it's, it's still not comforting. You're exactly right. So, what we're doing as a region, the CEOs of the region, is we're pulling together the report for PURA and for the governor, as well as our comments to UI. You may know, or you may not know, that I was the ranking member of Energy and Technology during Irene, Sandy, and crafted the Storm Response Bill. So, I know that bill language very well. I know the statute requirements, and I know what the utility companies did not do. And I am furious. I'm furious, because we have our crews out on the road, trying to clear the roads, and UI is supposed to be there with their crews to make safe. That means to cut the power, so our crews can clean up after. We have police, we have fire, we have Public Works. In some cases, we have the Health Department, we have EMS out on the roads, and it was, it's dangerous. And it's the utility company's responsibility to shut the power down, so we can make safe those roads. So, I hear you. I agree. As a former firefighter, I know you've experienced this. The best thing that we can do is really work together, and I think we work stronger as a region on this for all the coastal communities, Milford, Bridgeport, Fairfield, Trumbull, Stratford. We really got socked. Easton, Easton probably got hurt worse than all of us. But if we work together as a region, I think at least we will give the governor some really good talking points in the General Assembly, so they can, I don't think it'll be sanctions on UI, but it'll make sure that we do things better the next time around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hoedick. Any other questions for the mayor?
Chris, it's Greg Can.
Go ahead, Greg. Yeah.
Thank you. Hello, Madam Mayor. At the last RDA meeting regarding Center School, they suggested a joint meeting with the Town Council, possibly the end of August, you know, a special meeting to kind of put the heads together. Can we get an update on a timeline of moving forward with Center School?
So, the Center School Project meeting with RDA and the council is being scheduled with the council chairman.
Greg, I'll jump in right there. Greg, I'll, Greg, I'll jump in right there. I was.
Council Chairman means the schedule for the council. He's going through his, his schedule for the council.
Greg, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Greg, just to answer your question, last week was my intention of looking at that calendar on Tuesday with the mayor and then the storm hit. So give me, it's, it's on my shortlist. It's not going away until we get it. And I do want to have that soon.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
And councillor, there's no rush to do anything with Center School at this point. The reason, again, that I encouraged the RDA to bring the proposal before you was just to take the pulse of how you felt about it, if we were going in the right direction, the wrong direction. The public input has been valuable for the last two years. We, we use it for a lot of different things, not just the Center School project. So even though it might be frustrating that it's taking a little long, especially during COVID, I think the communication has been valuable, and I look forward to seeing us worked collaboratively on whatever we do, if anything, with the Center School property.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions for the mayor?
Chris, this is Bill O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, go ahead, sir.
Madam Mayor, I want to thank you for your leadership, for giving up the last days of your vacation to come back and deal with the the nightmare, and especially for your intervention to help 96-year-old World War II veteran Bob Morrissey, who needed a generator for power until Sunday. And I dealt with the frustration, too. I made a number of calls to UI that one day just could not get through. Finally, the next day I got through very quickly. And I still have a limb with branches on, on the wires at my house. Live wires. Luckily, I did not lose power. And of course, Mr. Morrissey, they had live wires there until, I think, Sunday, before the UI finally showed up to turn, turn off the power. So the electrician could come in and do his work that also needed to be done before the UI did their part work. But most of all, thanks for all you did. And let's, I guess, work with UI in the future to commute, get better communication and a better way to contact them.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien. Any other questions for the mayor? All right. None. We're going to move on. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next item on the agenda, item 4.3.1, the Public Works Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.1A and B. These both have to do with the West Broad Street reconstruction. So if we could take them together.
Okay, motion to approve item 4.3.1A and B. Motion made by Mr. Poissons. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Harden. I see. Correct. Gotcha, David. Any discussion on this item? On these items? Excuse me.
Chairman, it's Greg Can.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you. The, these expenditures, is this a state project, or will we need town funds?
Now, the funding is already in place for this. Mr. Casey stated at the meeting.
Yeah, Greg, it's in the, the meeting notes, the meeting minutes for the Public Works. That was in the pony.
Okay, it's already been funded. Very good.
Yep. Any other, any other discussion on this item, A and B? Okay, hearing none. We're going to call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes 10-0. Next item.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules to add an item to the agenda that was inadvertently left off. It was another referral from the Public Works Committee.
Go ahead, Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to add. Sorry, finding in my notes here.
I believe it's under.
Yes, it was sent to the town council with a favorable recommendation, the installation of a cast-in-place six-foot-by-three-foot reinforced concrete culvert section in an amount not to exceed $11,529.40. Again, this also has to do with the West Broad Street reconstruction that's been going on.
Thank you, Mr. Poissons. So motion to waive the rules to add the item Mr. Poissons just mentioned to the agenda as, as was supplied in the, in the Public Works meeting minutes in the, in the pony. Do I have a second to that motion? I, I heard Mr. O'Brien first. Sorry for the second. All right. So any discussion on waiving the rules to add this? As I mentioned, it's, I'm looking at it right, it was in the pony, the third bullet point down on page two of the Public Works Committee was sent with a favorable. So with that, I will, I will ask for a roll call vote. Actually, not a roll call, excuse me, just a vote on this. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes 10-0. So now, Town Attorney Leclerc, we'll go back to the motion, excuse me, the item as, and now we vote on it on the agenda, correct? That was just a wave?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Once it's been added to the agenda now, someone, it's on your agenda, someone should move second, discuss vote, please.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to move the item that we just added to the agenda from Public Works.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Poissons. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Thank you, Caitlin. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Careful time. Any opposed? Motion passes 10-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 4.3.2, the Building Needs Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2A. It's a Stratford High renovation. It's a Turner change order for the soil removal. It's the last piece of soil that needs to be, last bunch of soil that needs to be removed.
Okay, motion by Mr. Poissons. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
I second Dave Harden.
Seconded by Mr. Harden. Okay, any discussion on this, on this item? No. Okay, hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 9-0. Point, note, Ms. Paquette. I just received a note from Mr. David Wright that Jim Connor just jumped off at eight, his call jumped off at 8:36 PM. So I believe this pass vote should have been a 9-0 as well as this one. If we can make that correction and note that in the minutes, please. Those accurate?
The, the vote for the Public Works or just these building needs?
No, at 8:36, we were voting on the Public 3.1, the new added item. A and B, he was on, but added item only would be.
Yep.
And this one will also be 9-0.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, for the, for the, for the attention. Okay, all. Next item, that was item, next item on the agenda, Town Attorney's Report.
Mr. Chairman, we still have one more from Building Needs.
Item B. Go ahead, Mr. Poissons. Sorry about that.
No problem. I'd like to approve item 4.3.2B. It's a Stratford High Turner change order. It's for the netting around the new turf field that's going at the high school to keep balls from flying all over.
2B. Motion to approve item 4.3.2B. Do I have a second to that?
Seconded, pardon.
Discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, we cannot hear. Someone's got an open mic with a lot of background noise.
Thank you, sir. All right. So we're under discussion. Mr. Harden had seconded it. We're under discussion for item 4.3.2, item B. Any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for a vote. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, chair votes aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Town Attorney Hodgson, Town Attorney's Report. We do have a lot of background noise when you come on, Chris, just an FYI.
Yeah, thank you. I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And he's back on mute. Excellent. Good. Next item on the agenda, item five, 5.3.1. This was a, Mr. Poissons, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to take item 5.3.1 off the table.
Laura Dantrell, second.
Okay, motion to take item 5.3.1 off the table. Ms. Dantrell has a second. Any discussion on this? This, just to bring everyone up to speed, this is something that we had tabled last month. There were, if you remember and refer back to your minutes, there were two items for essentially pandemic costs for Turner, for the Stratford High School. The first item was costs they had incurred. We voted and approved that. The second item, we tabled pending further clarity, and we had asked Mr. Timniak to work with Turner on this. Mr. Timniak, if you could just give us a brief update on this, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think you should vote to take it off the table, and then it's on your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. So we'll vote on it now, take it off the table, put it on the agenda. So all in favor of putting it on, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Careful time. Any opposed? Passes 9-0. Mr. Poissons, if you'd like to, motion to approve it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 5.3.1.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Laura Dantrell, I'll second.
Thank you. She beat you, Dave. Sorry. Seconded by Ms. Dantrell. Just under discussion. Mr. Timniak, if you could bring us up to speed, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I reached out to Paul Drummy of Crack immediately following our last town council meeting. I said the number of 160, I know, you know, we discussed how they came to the 160. They took what the cost had cost up until that point, and they projected the next couple of months, and they came back with a 166 number based upon the projections. Well, the initial reaction of COVID and what they were doing to keep the project going, they, they basically sharpened their pencil. They looked at what they need to do to finish the job. And they came back with $105,000 number. Now, as a reminder, this is just an allocation. This isn't the exact amount, and they do want me to remind everybody that the door is open in case the number needs to come up for future after nine, they gave me a date, after 9/18. So they would like to allocate, have the town council allocate $105,000 versus the 160 they requested previously.
Mr. Timniak, question? So they're going to be giving us the next 30-day reportance of town, correct? Is that understanding now?
Yes, that's what I'm, I'm told.
And just any other questions for Mr. Timniak on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
Yes, Chris T., I believe it was through September 14th, not the 18th, right? Because the 14th would be our next council meeting.
The email I have from Paul says projected to 9/18. And that's in the column. In the actual email, he does state that the September 14th meeting is the town council meeting. So I hope, I hope to get an updated number prior to that meeting so we can discuss it then. I would assume it would go through Building Needs again with any, any update they have. But we're definitely monitoring it, and I appreciate, I appreciate the work everybody's done in trying to, you know, fine tune this number.
Right. I think next month it would definitely should go through to Stratford High Subcommittee and then go to Building Needs and then come back to us. You're right.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that, Mr. Timniak, as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend item 5.3.1 to the amount of $105,000.
Motion to amend item 5.3.1 to 105,000 by Mr. Poissons. Do I have a second to that?
Laura Dantrell, I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Dantrell. Any discussion on the amended, on the amendment of 105?
I just have a quick question. Why, what is the purpose of doing the allocation ahead of time? Why wouldn't they just do a change order as it occurs or an expense as it incurred? What would be the advantage to putting aside, I'm assuming this is all coming out of contingency, correct?
Mr. Timniak?
Yeah, when they do stuff as an allowance, it's because they don't know exactly what's going to happen. If there was an uptick in COVID or went down, they needed more cleaning, less cleaning. So when it's in as an allowance, it doesn't have to be exactly that number. It could actually be less. And a lot of times, a lot of Turner stuff, when we've given them an allowance, such as the summer spending to keep the project moving and everything, has come in under the number that they've projected. They basically put a number in to keep the project moving.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be clarified on that, and I know that Turner's been great as far as staying within budget. So we're good.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Dantrell. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none. We're going to vote on the amendment to, to amend the item, changing it from 163,557 to 105,000. We'll call for a vote on this. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Okay, no opposed. Motion passes 9-0. Before we move back to voting on the item as amended, Ms. Paquette and Mr. Wright, I'm sorry, relying on you for the, Mr. Connor, Mr. Connor is telling me he is on, but I believe he is one of the muted callers as he dropped off and called back in. What would be your recommendation on how we can identify him?
Let me unmute the callers and they can let us.
Try to pull him out. Okay. I stand by. Jim, Jim Connor, can you identify yourself, please? You're muted. Jim?
I'm, I'm talking now. I've been here the whole time. I vote.
Yep. I have Dave Wright, 16. I have you, Jim.
Okay. We lost his appearance on the screen, and I couldn't tell that he was still on. I apologize.
Muted outside.
Here we go.
All right, stand with us, everybody. Standby. I have the councillors. Okay, Jim Connor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
When did you, when did you drop off? I know you said you were on, and I apologize.
I, I was on the whole, I was off for 30 seconds. My phone died, and I signed back in. The mayor was still giving a report. So I voted on every single thing. I guess I thought you guys could hear me.
Okay. Mr. Leclerc, Town Attorney Leclerc? Thank you. Town Attorney Leclerc, what would your recommendation be for Mr. Connor? He's saying he did vote on everything.
That I would take that representation. I would just ask Mr. Connor to confirm that he voted in the affirmative on everything. If that's the case.
Can you confirm that for Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, I, I voted affirmative on, on every single motion.
Okay. Ms. Paquette, if you can make that note. Thank you all. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you all for your patience. Next item on the agenda, excuse me, we're, we're back to 5.3.1 as amended. So I'll need a motion to make final approval of that motion as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 5.3.1 as amended.
Okay, motion by Mr. Poissons. Do I have a second to that?
Laura Dantrell, I'll second.
Ms. Dantrell, thank you. Any discussion on, on this as a final approval? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda, 7.1, an awarding of a contract for athletic field renovations for Benell High School Field.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I moved that the contract for athletic field renovations, Benell High School baseball field, and alternate to the original bid be awarded to Field Turf USA. And the mayor be and is hereby authorized to enter into a contract for such, informed satisfactorily to the town attorney.
Second to this motion?
Laura Dantrell, I'll second.
Second by Dave Harden.
Mr. Harden, I got you there. I'm sorry. There were two people at the same time. Sorry. Mr. Harden has a second. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien?
Mr. O'Brien, go ahead, sir.
As some of you know, Ken Poisson and I attend a meeting every Thursday morning at the job site and go over the progress. And I believe, Ken, can you confirm with me that we're actually going to save half a billion dollars? The mayor had mentioned 100,000, but they, I believe they told us we would save half a million in addition to the fact that there's potential damage to the field if we waited a year to do the lights.
Yeah, the, the number was hovering around $200,000 or maybe a little more if we had put the lights off till next year, just with escalation. And they would have to rent a much bigger crane. And we wouldn't want them driving on the turf, the brand new turf, and risking damage to it. So doing it this way was a much better move. A, it gets the project done. And B, it's done cheaper, which is very important.
Thank you, Ken.
And the other, yeah, the other important point about this project is that this field is used more by youth and adults than it is used by the high schools. And that will be even more the case when this becomes an all-purpose field that will also be used for soccer, lacrosse, and softball rather than just baseball.
Thank, thank you. And to that point, I'll just add, I mean, to your point, Bill, and no one, no one knows soccer and youth sports better than, than you in this town, to having more field availability for, for the kids to be able to schedule games and have more games, especially with the growth in lacrosse and, and other additional sports and soccer, I think it's just going to have value added. And it's great that now that Benell and Stratford High both have, have, have pristine fields with lights in the entire town. So thanks to everybody for your hard work on this. Any other discussion on the item? Nope. Okay, we'll call for a vote for approval on 7.1. Everyone, please.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Next item on the agenda is item 7.2. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
7.2, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Motion by Mr. Harden to approve item 7.2. Do I have a second to that?
Laura Dantrell, I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Perillo, I got his hand. Sorry, Laura.
I saw that.
Okay. Item 7.2, this was included in everyone's town packet. This came from Planning and was referred to us with a favorable recommendation. Any discussion on this item?
Chris, it's Greg Cann.
Go ahead, Greg.
Looking at the map that was attached to the meeting minutes from Planning.
Yep.
Which, where is the location of this donation?
Mr. LeFlore or Leclair, are you, I know Town Attorney Jackson worked on this or had, had vibes on this.
Yeah, I do not know where, I don't, I do not have an answer to that question.
Greg, okay. Greg, what I know, I spoke with.
I don't either, Mr. Chairman.
No, okay. Thank you, John. Greg, what I did, I spoke with Town Attorney Jackson did last week and it was a very, I'm looking at the map right now. It's the sliver of the end of the dead ends, the cul-de-sac. And to your point, to your point well made on the, on the map, it is a little confusing. Mr. Poisson, did you have any knowledge on the spot?
Yeah, it's, it's the spot that's highlighted at the end of the road there, like you just said, at the end of Lynn Crest Drive. It's the little rectangular area there, Greg, do you see it? It's kind of highlighted with that arrow going to it. It's at the very end of, that current end of Lynn Crest Drive.
Yeah, it's where the driveways start.
Yes.
Um, okay. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Any other questions? Any other discussion, I should say, on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Last item on the agenda, item 7.3, TA Contract Supervisors Union.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the contract agreement.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second to that?
Seconded by Dave Harden.
Seconded by Councilor Harden. Any discussion? This count, the, this, excuse me, this TA was included in the pony for council guys only at this moment. Hopefully everyone had to take, had a chance to take a look at it. I thought it was a well-negotiated contract on both sides. If there's any discussion on this?
Greg Cann will just make a point that we used to carry large balance, we used to carry large balance for future settlements, meaning contracts that were delayed in getting signed. So it's good that we're bringing timely closure to our contracts for financial reasons, but probably for morale also.
I agree. Thank you, Greg. And, and thank you to Mayor Hoyt and the administration on, on the negotiation, as well as the Supervisors Union for, for working well together. So I want to thank them as well. With that, I'll call this for a vote. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Last item on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait, Council Chair?
Yep, Madam, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
So in regards to the last item that you just passed, I think it should be recognized that the Supervisors Union gave up six months of salary increases for this contract. And because they knew that the town was in difficult position with the COVID pandemic, that we had deferred taxes for 90 days. And I'd like to commend them for their resiliency in helping us stay afloat to help with their jobs as well, but also for the town in general. So I, I think their, their leadership at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Point well made. I know you're turning on. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Greg Cann.
Motion by Greg?
Bill O'Brien, seconds.
Seconded by Bill O'Brien. Everyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, all.